Recommendations on rezoning, use permits, and concurrent variance application. Comprehensive land use plan, maps, and amendments to the zoning resolution. Citizens may speak for or against zoning issues, and each side will have up to 10 minutes total to present its case. The planning commission's recommendations will be forwarded to the city's mayor and council for final decision on the fourth Tuesday of the next month. We will proceed with the agenda. Ms. Parks, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Present.
Commissioner Perry.
Present.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon.
Present.
Commissioner Weatherly.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a part of call.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the approval of minutes. Commissioners, did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
We will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the September 28 meeting as well as the minutes from the October 26 meeting.
Alright, that motion was made by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Hadley. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Weatherly.
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Ayes have it.
With no old business, we will move on to new business. Just a quick reminder that for public comment, we will have 10 minutes for and 10 minutes against. When you come up to leave your comment, please state your name and address and what district you live in. Now we'll move on to item one, public hearing to consider U22-012. The applicant Henry Bailey Jr. is requesting a special use permit for the expansion of a transportation to an existing waste pro facility. Staff, all that you take today?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. As Madam Chair stated, the case number is U22-012. The address is 4785 Fortin Industrial Boulevard. The applicant, Mr. Henry Bailey Jr. is requesting a special use permit for the expansion of a transfer station to an existing waste pro facility within the M2 Heavy Industrial Zone District on approximately 41.85 acres of land. The subject property again is located at 4785 Fortin Industrial Boulevard and located within District 1. Just a little background information on this petition. The subject property is currently being used as a recycling facility, and some of the rich materials are metals, plastic, and cardboard. The recycling facility has been in existence as early as 2009. The applicant is proposing to add a solid waste component to the overall operation on the site. The building is northern Fortin Industrial Boulevard within existing industrial park. The expansion will be in an area that's currently developed and work paved. The applicant does not have a current special use SGP for the primary use. Here you will see the future land use map, or some may know it as comprehensive plan. The star represents what the location is for the sites. The future land use map designation is industrial zone, and the zoning that is in compliance with this particular character area is OI, which is office institutional, M1 light industrial, and M2 heavy industrial. Here you will see the current zoning map. It is on again, M2 heavy industrial. Again, the star represents where the location, where the site is located. This is the area view of the property. This is the site plan, and the area that's in red is the addition that's going to be on this particular site. Analysis. The city of South Fortin, 2021 comprehensive plan has designated a parcel to the industrial zone land use destination. The city's land use policy document supports the proposed use. The expansion of the transfer station must obtain a special use permit to operate a transfer station as well as solid waste if a SGP was not approved issue to the operator of primary use. The waste management equipment will be placed in an area that's already developed or paved, and this construction will include underground utilities and stormwater management. Staff recommendations. Staff recommends to approve the applicant's request with three conditions. Those conditions are as follows. The proposed solid waste equipment shall be within the general conformity with the site plan submitted by the applicant dated July 19, 2022. The applicant must maintain the property and keep clean of debris. And prior to the insurance of a building permit, the applicant must submit and obtain an LDP land disturbance permit. And that concludes staff recommendations for this petition.
I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
One second.
Alright, that motion was made by Reverend Shannon Jones and seconded by Commissioner Weatherly. Ms. Parks, can you please call both?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Commissioner Weatherly.
Aye. Is the petition now present?
Yes, the applicant is there. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. I appreciate your long-term analysis. My name is Henry Bailey, counsel for the applicant. My address is 33452 Road, East. Again, as the statements are stated, we request a special use permit on this property for the expansion of the existing transportation and waste facility there on the site. This property, I will allow the applicant to give away more details and I will about the use, provide some samples about how the use is going to operate. And I would note that the property has been used in many matters. It's currently used not for at least 14 years and quite possibly much longer than this discovery that I have had in my presentation. And that's really it. I will, we just ask that you follow staff recommendations and recommend approval of the special use permit for this project. I'll turn it over to Chris Peters to come up and give you some details.
Thank you.
I think we've got to hand out some. Mr. Pass, Mr. Staff, sir. So, Staff, gentlemen. You'll pass them out.
Thank you for having us. As Senator said, we've got some packets that kind of explain the project a little bit better, a little bit more detail than some of the things that you see. And then we've got some boards, and I've got a couple samples of the material that will be taken at the facility. So you can understand that what we're trying to do here. So, we'll start with page two. We can just follow through along. I'll kind of go through this quickly. But at Senator Brussel, our mission is to revolutionize the waste management industry. We want to divert as much useful solid waste from landfills as possible while creating 40 new green jobs, renewable green energy, solid fuel, and a cleaner city. At the same time, we'll reduce the greenhouse gas emissions, capture those gases to make transportation fuel, and turning those, turning solid fuel into alternatives to coal and natural gas at industries. If we jump to page three, this kind of just gives you a snapshot of the waste problem in the US. Georgia, other states are pretty similar to this. So you have about 50% of your waste in the state that goes to a landfill. What we're looking at is diverting that 50% that goes to a landfill. So the middle picture is what makes up that 50% of trash. You have organics, plastics, metals, textiles, wood. We want to capture that, that piece of the trash and recycle as much as we can. We, we can recycle 60, 70% of that trash and divert it from going to a landfill. So we'll recycle the plastics, we'll recycle the organics, and we'll recycle any metals that are in that waste stream, diverting them from going to a landfill. So the facility that processes anywhere, let's just say 100,000 tons, we'll divert 70% of that, reuse it, make green energy, reduce greenhouse gases, CO2 emissions from landfills, and make a solid fuel at the end, which I have some examples of for you. So then if we jump to... Yeah, there's, there's two bags for each. So there's one that's the material after our processing, that is our, our pre-solid fuel fluff that we use to then go into a digester. And in that digester, we make different types of methane gas. And we use that methane gas to compress it to make transportation fuel, compressed natural gas or green natural gas. After the process is done, we make a solid fuel out of the trash that's left over after digestion, and we make a solid brick, and you sell back to cement hills. They offset the use of coal or natural gas in their, in their boilers by burning this, this fuel instead, thus saving them some, saving them some green energy credits, giving them some renewable credits by using what would otherwise have gone into a landfill in their, in their process. On page four, this just goes through a little bit of what I just said. The facility's been there for over 14 years. They've done recycling on the property. They're currently processing solid waste. There's a MSW transfer station there. And what we're proposing to do is instead of that trash that's going to the landfill from that transfer station, that we want to process it and divert it. We want to recycle plastics. We want to recycle metals, and we want to recycle the organics to make a, a renewable natural gas. All of that, that 70% that we want to recycle would otherwise go to a landfill. So for cities that don't have recycling programs, you don't have a single stream, or somebody putting your plastics, your metals, your cardboard into a separate bin, they've got a trash bin, it's a great process for them because we can do that recycling for the municipality, for the city, in our operation. And you don't have to have another truck on the road that has diesel emissions. You don't have to have other bins that folks have to buy to put the recycling in or the waste hauler, like a waste row, has to provide those for them. So we can do all of that while diverting 70% from the landfill. And we're still going to have textiles, some woods, some CND debris, and things like that that will still have to go to landfill, but we can, we can divert a majority of that, that waste. So on page five, which I think you've already, you've already seen, staff has shown me the picture of the facility and where it's going to be and the site plan. And this is a little closer up picture, so if I, if I could kind of just walk you through real quick what, what I'm talking about right now is the... So this is the current transfer station, waste pro transfer station. So they're bringing MSW into there already. This will be our expansion inside the building. So this will be inside the building. This is merch equipment. This is equipment that will separate out plastics and metals and cardboard. So we pull those out of the trash and recycle and sell that as commodities into the market. Then, these are our Brussel units. The Brussel unit is a pulping piece of equipment. And what it does is it pulps the organic fraction that's left in the trash after you pull it through recycling. It pulps the food, the paper, and the cardboard. And that pulp, after it comes out, we screen it through a trummel, and this is what you get in the bag. That is what comes out. So in that bag is sanitized and homogenized food waste, cardboard, paper, and some plastic pieces, some things that will get through the trummel. But that is our, our feedstock that goes into the digester. So this is, if you want to smell it, but it smells pretty good, but it's, it's odorless. So once we go through our process, and everybody knows what trash smells like, once it goes through our process, it comes out of there odorless and sanitized because our process is actually about an hour, 200 degrees, and it's sanitizing as well as preparing it for digestion. This is our digester. So once we screen it, it's just a search pile for, for logistics. And then the digester is what makes the, makes the biogas. That biogas then can be used for any number of things. You can make electricity out of it. You can make natural gas go right to the pipeline. In fact, it's a pipeline out in the, in some, AGL has a pipeline out in front and you can tie it right into that pipeline. Or you can make transportation fuel for buses, for city buses, school buses, trash trucks. Waste Pro already runs several different vehicles now on CND. And this will just allow them to add to their fleet to remove the diesel trucks off the road and put environmentally friendly trucks on the road that would use the trash that's coming from their transfer station to make gas to then use back in the trucks to go pick up more, more MSWs. So it's a great circular cycle of environmentally friendly processes. There's a couple more pages in here that are just more site plan. If you go to page 11, that's actually the Brussel unit. That's our pulver. We have one down in Cordial, Georgia, that's running right now. So it pulps your organic and just kind of give you an idea of what that, you can see it on the site plan, but what it actually looks like. So 11 and 12 is the Brussel pulver. And then 13, 14, 15. 14 is, or 13 is the raw MSW. Everybody's seen what trash looks like, but that's what, that's what it looks like when it comes in and gets tipped on the tipping floor. We take that as our raw material. After the Brussel, before screening, it's page 14. And it looks, it's gone through, so it still has some plastics in it. It still has all the food waste, the paper, and cardboard. And 15 is then what you see on your, on your desk right there. That's the material that we end up with once we screen it, but then it goes into the digester. And then the last piece is that we make a solid fuel. So after the digester, we make a solid fuel, which is the last piece of the, in the bag. So these will be the solid fuel brutes. So this is the end product. This is what comes out of that, that trash that we divert. We make the fluff that goes in the digester and makes the gas. And then we take this and we sell it as an alternative coal or natural gas. And that's just one site plan though. Okay, I think I am... And then the last couple pictures, my last minute. I'll just show you the digester on page... Sorry, it's hard to read. 18. So you can see our digesters fit really well into urban industrial areas. They fit well into rural areas. They're all enclosed. There are, there's nothing outside. Everything that feeds into the digester and comes out of the digester is all enclosed in conveyor belts. The digester itself is just a cement box with a panel in the middle that moves the material from one end to the other. And as that material moves from one end to the other, it makes gas through bacteria that creates the biogas. And we capture that biogas to make fuel. And those last couple pages are just pictures of the different digesters. That's it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you. You can keep those if you'd like. Your name is... It's very unique, dude.
Want to break this, sir? Excuse me, sir. I'll be really rude to your car like that. No, no. Excuse me, sir. Can you just state your name again for the record, please?
Okay, Chris Peters. And the proposed facility is in District 1.
Um, that's the end of the time for comments and favors. So there, we can't... Uh, are there any comments for? I also...
ORG?
So I guess we'll move on to a guest? Is that correct?
Yes, no fours.
Okay. And I know that, that there were residents that felt like their comments were coming through. Did we able to find the...
Yes, I believe the applicant, she was the one who said that she was there.
Yeah, I meant beyond that.
No, she's the only one. She needs to be...
Against, okay. I just, I guess I want to say further than that. I heard from residents that they're, they were trying to get in their comments against. And they were older people who are just probably confused by things changing with how to get comments in.
Um, I read Miss Lee.
Yeah.
Okay, see, I'm going to see. Hold on just a second.
Hello, change. My name is Philip Green. I'm 69th district, Chillicothe, South Fortin District 2. And I'm interested in the expansion of the solid waste transfer station. As a former industrial agent and environmental science investigator for both on the public and private sector, I have inspected several solid waste facilities. I have several concerns and issues that I want to discuss to the planning commission bodies. And one is odor and air pollution. Garbage generates odor depending on the direction of the wind. Thou stand to odor and smell by keeping driving along FIB businesses, employees, restaurants, people walking and raiding public transportation. Also, there will be instances where fire will occur adding to the air pollution. This is a nuisance. Number two, rats and birds. Rats and birds are attracted to garbage, which in turn carries and spreads diseases. Number three, groundwater contamination and stormwater runoff. When it rains, the stormwater will come into contact and the garbage causing runoff. That's also liquid we generate in the garbage trucks when garbage trucks are empty in every facility. The runoff will then reach into the ground causing groundwater contamination, thus impacting our drinking water. Number four, noise and noise pollution. There will be loud noises when heavy equipment is rolling through and compacting the garbage. In addition, the garbage will empty and come in and go from this location. Number five, impact on neighboring residents, community, businesses, and restaurants. From my understanding, here are two residential suburbs down off Baker Street Road, which are about 2 miles and 3.1 miles from this location. The addresses are 367 N Row and 788 B. I realize that some people like the smell of garbage since it contains some money, but I am not one of them. And this is not fair to these communities, businesses, and restaurants. With all above public health and safety issues, why not set up the transfer station at the landfill? And what is Georgia EPD and Public Health Department and Fire Department saying regards to permits and safety? I didn't know about the piece that he mentioned about recycling and all that. But from my years of inspection, there's always going to be waste. And so the concern is what you're going to do with it. And we got to be concerned about our community and house on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that, that's it for public comment? Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Weatherly, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Commissioner Walters, a second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Weatherly and seconded by Commissioner Walters. It's properly moved and seconded. Ms. Parks, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Hadley.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Walters.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Devon. Devon. Commissioner Weatherly.
Aye.
The pass has happened, okay? And at this time, commissioners, if you can ask questions to the applicant? Can the applicant come back up? And I guess just raise hands and I will acknowledge you. Commissioner Perry, I see you first.
Before I ask a question, I got a question for staff.
So even though the presentation about was about recycling, what were asked to approve has nothing to do with recycling, correct? We're asked to approve a special use permit for a transfer station. And the transfer station has been operating at this location for the past fourteen years? And so if their request for a special permit for a transfer station was denied, well, how would that affect their current operations? Would they have to cease operation as a transfer station?
No, they will only be able to operate the facility as is, which is the recycle center. So they could add a new component to it because the recycle center was already operating. Because they, they didn't, at this time, it was, got the disancing. It wasn't, it wasn't anything in the code that said that had to get especially used to operate that recycle center.
It's been run over.
It's been run over, correct?
So, so that's what, what my question again was, have they been operated as a transfer station for the past fourteen years?
They've operated as a recycle center, to my knowledge.
So you have not used the facility as a transfer station at all during these fourteen years?
Waste Pro is using it as a transfer station.
That's what I thought.
They have a recycling component up front. The middle is a transfer station and the back is empty.
So that's, that's my question again. So if they do not get the special use permit as a transfer station, will they have to cease operating as a transfer station at that location?
No, whatever they've been operating as is and they can operate as is. They just can't get that new component, which is the solid waste. It's not like, if I'm not mistaken, the solid waste component of it, the equipment of it. So whatever they was doing primarily as is, then they can still operate as is.
So I'm kind of lost. If they've been operating as is as a transfer station and weren't given a permit for a transfer station, what, what, what's the new component that would approve it?
It would be the expansion for the solid waste component of the equipment of it.
Maybe a different question. What are we transferring at that station? Is it recycling material or trash?
Trash.
Okay.
So they're currently taking trash that comes in and they're putting in long haul trailers to take the wind out. So that's been operating for many years. Our component of it would be to recycle that trash into the plastics and metals and organic fraction. So that it doesn't go to the wind. We can reuse it, we can make renewable energy, that we can get the recycling that's in the trash that's not going in the front of the building because people are putting it in the right container. We can get that recycling to its proper place. So the metals, the plastics, all that to the proper place.
And specifically, this is not being made at the center currently? That's what you're asking us to bring in the machinery and make this essentially?
And that would be...
One quick question, point of clarity for me at the conference. So the trash that is currently being transferred there versus sending it somewhere else, you're gonna keep it and convert it. You're not asking for more trash to come to this facility?
We're taking what's currently coming in and we're going to process it further to recycle it.
And so it won't be an increased volume of trash as the current trash is going through there anyway?
Correct.
Thank you.
Might have, you could also reduce the amount of trash that ends up in the landfill.
Sure, sure.
Does anyone else have a question?
Question here. What is your waste stream, what is the source of it?
The Waste Pro trucks, whatever routes that are running.
So that's the residential and community?
Right. We like the residential and we like the commercial when it's hotels, restaurants, things that are high in paper and organic fraction. Because that's, that's the best piece off for what we're trying to do. Plus it has recycling in it, the plastics and metals that we can get out. We don't want C and D. C and D is inert anyway in a landfill. So if it's in a landfill, it's not making gas. What we're trying to do is reduce the greenhouse gases that are coming out of landfill. Landfills and vehicles are the biggest polluters in the earth. And what our equipment does and what our process does is gets that organic fraction out of the waste. We capture ninety-five percent. Ninety-five percent of the organics that are in the trash, we will capture and make into a renewable fuel.
What are you, sorry, what are you currently doing now with your waste?
We're not operating that the Waste Pro. Waste Pro currently is bringing in the trash and putting it into long haul trailers and taking it to a landfill. So they're currently landfilling all the trash that comes in their transfer station. And then they have the recycling center up front that's recycling cardboard and plastics, things like that. Now, there's a lot of stuff that they can't use that's coming into the recycling center that could be trash, could be a bunch of paper and cardboard that can't use to the soil, that can't use soil, cardboard and recycling. That also goes in the trash. So they load big semi-trailers for the trash and send it to the land. We wanna take that and recycle it and repurpose it for better higher use.
Commissioner Perry?
So there, there's something to you that you can't run through this process. Can you run plastics through this process? So plastics can be diverted from the landfill and turned into the reusable guns?
Correct, so there is a fraction in the, in that brick, there is a fraction that's plastic. And then the bigger pieces, the Coke bottles, the Pepsi bottles, the, you know, Gatorade, whatever, those bigger bottles, we will recycle up and we will take those out of the waste stream and then get those to the proper commodity buyer to, to then recycle and get them into the market. But there is a fraction that, that ends up, it's already been cut up or shredded or something like that, and we'll take that and process it as well. And then it gets into the fuel. That, that brick has about eight thousand BTUs per pound of heating value. So a fraction of that is the cardboard, the paper, everything that goes through the digester. We extract the gas. And by the time it gets to the end of the digester, there's not much gas left. So then we use it to make bricks because there's still a lot of lig- ligament in it from the cardboard and some piece of plastic that it might absorb.
I want to ask you, with the addition of what you're trying to do, could you address the lead air pollution?
So everything that's in our process is all self-contained. Our building that will have our recycling hero in is, it has an air filtering system in it. So the garbage smell that you would normally smell at a transfer station, once it leaves that transfer station, comes inside our building, our air is cleaned and filtered. Everything after we remove the plastics and metals is self-contained in a conveyor belt or in the digester, in the trummel. Everything's gonna be in a building and under negative air pressure. We will take it and filter it through biofilters. So the odors will be very minimal. And if, and if you smell the bag, I mean, once it comes out of our recell process, I mean, it has, it smells like dirt.
So do you anticipate any alleged impact on the, on the neighboring, on the neighboring communities?
Chris, I can speak to this one.
Yeah, you can, but we did not just answer your question and then Captain can, Captain can answer it further. But no, because we feel that there's the odors that are already there from the transfer station and the trash that's already dumped on the floor, we're planning on cleaning that up. Our process actually takes that, moves along into our building and in the air filtration process sooner than to have that trash sitting on the ground and that transfer station going into a semi truck and then sitting there before it's transferred off. We're gonna take all that moving into our building and then start the process, which is all inside or self-contained. Go ahead.
So I can speak to this in a little bit more detail. My name is Captain Mizner. I'm, I work for a company called Trinity Consultants. Trinity's hired us to handle the air permitting for the site. So basically, the emission profile from the equipment...
How, handle the what now?
Air permitting. So, so basically, every industrial site in the state of Georgia, you have to assess what your air emissions will be. And you have to go through permitting with EPD to get a permit for the site that you're trying to install. So basically, the profile of emissions as expected to come from the site is minor. So there's a few different determinations as far as what EPD defines as air permits. So there's a, the smallest level of air permit that you can get is called a minor source permit. The site will be applying for a minor source permit, which basically will just cover, so it's essentially an opportunity for EPD to review the profile of emissions that might be coming from the site and give any recommendations in the form of a permit or not recommendations, but legally enforceable conditions in the form of a permit for the site to ensure that the site is complying with all, not all environmental law from an emissions standpoint. So to, long story short, the emissions profile is that of a minor source. And we'll be applying for a minor source permit with Georgia EPD and going through their typical permitting action to ensure that there's no undue impact to the environment as a result of the equipment. Is that to your question?
Could you explain, oh, sorry, go on. I know, I, I have a question on this same thread.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're good, okay. Could you elaborate on what that minor use permit is? I know that Georgia's standards are very loose in comparison to other states. It's actually, we have, along with Pennsylvania and maybe like one other state, we have like the loosest. So what does that mean exactly?
Sure. So, so the way that the, so the permitting program in Georgia is established by, it comes down from EPA. So the EPA has established what's called the Title V permitting program. And basically, the way that the Title V permitting program is if your emissions of the criteria to pollutants are above a certain threshold, which is, which varies per pollutant, but if they're above a certain threshold, you're considered to be a Title V major source and you have to get a Title V permit to operate. But everything below that threshold is considered to be a minor source permit. So Georgia actually doesn't have the flexibility to determine what the thresholds are. The thresholds are established by EPA. And if you're below EPA's thresholds, then you get a Georgia, a state specific permit, which is the one that people need to comply for.
Okay. Commissioner Perry?
Got a question, got a question for you. So right now, your, your proposed site is gonna be at the current transfer station for Waste Pro. As we all know, in the future, Waste Pro is, I guess slated to, to handle the trash for the entire city, which will be a huge increase in amount of trash that's gonna be coming to that transfer station. Is there a, a limit on the amount of trash that your process will be able to handle? And, and what I'm trying to get to is, so let's say right now, there's two tons worth of trash that comes there a day. And that goes from two tons to fifty tons. And you're trying to process seventy percent of that, which could lead to a backup. So how much trash are you able to process on any given day with this, with this process? And what happens if the transfer station had a lot more trash than you're able to handle? Is that gonna be now backed up at the transfer station? Or is that trash that's gonna go directly to the landfill?
Yeah, so we're able to process, so we designed the facility based on, oh, just a second. The, the amount of trash that's coming in, so let's say there is three hundred tons per day, which is what they're processing. So we size our, how many recell units, how many organic culprits we need, and then how big does the digester have to be to process the, the pulp? So our process is very, very modular. In, in the front end, to get the plastics and the metals and things, you can turn up the equipment or slow it down based on the, the amount of trash that you're bringing in. Here, you really can't do, do that. It's a process. Once it goes into the system, it's kinda, it's kinda there. It's gotta go through its own recycle, the digester has to. So those are sides that handle that three hundred tons per day. If one of them all of a sudden starts bringing in five hundred tons per day, they will either take it to a landfill or they'll transfer it to one of their other transfer stations. Because we're working on a similar project for Waste Pro from Buette County. So it's the same thing. As they grow, they don't anticipate, so their forecast for the next ten years is to, you know, they're losing cities, picking up cities, losing municipalities. They picked up Atlanta, they're maybe do Atlanta's, or Boone County, they're recycling a lot of trash. So things are always ebbing and flowing. But they can never bring us more trash than we can, that we're set up to process today or in the year once we get our permits.
And so you're setting up, your request in the process, what is the current load at that facility today?
Yep. And if, if they bring in more, that will still be their old process. But that's not the goal. Because everything that they send to a landfill is not a mission of what we're trying to do. This spirit of this, this process is really recycle and create the, the green energy that you wanna do here in the facility. So they, if they said, hey, we're gonna have seven hundred tons per day, then we build a facility for seven hundred tons per day. But they just don't have that kind of volume. And it's really for them. It's not, you know, waste management or public services, whoever else is calling in the communities. You know, they're not, they're not able to use the facility. But people like Publix, Mercedes Stadium, Atlanta Hartsville Airport, I mean, all have expressed interest. So there might be some additional volumes from just particular clients who are wanting to be green, who, the organic waste from Mercedes Stadium now is to accomplish that about two hours away. So they're like, okay, this is a great facility, can we bring our organic too? So we could sort of truck out. So there will be some ups and downs and flows. You have some of these bigger customers that say, hey, we've got an initiative to divert and be energy neutral, divert a hundred percent from landfill. Those are things we could look at. So that, that would be increased volume here and there. But definitely just on a bigger, bigger customer scale that you wanna help out to achieve their goals.
Commissioner, I have a few questions.
Was the community informed, residents informed and how'd you, how'd you do that?
Yeah, it's a good game, ladies and gentlemen. The city of South Fulton, whenever you file a zoning application, variances or special use permit required, send letters out to residents with a mile radius of the property. We did that in accordance with the city of South Fulton requirements, issuing out the letters. So I think it was over three hundred and fifty residents that got letters. We had one person show up to our community meeting, we held a meeting, and that was it. And ended the community meeting.
Shoot, how, how, how soon was the meeting from?
At least fourteen days. So it was, it was, it was a very ample notice.
Where was it held?
We had held a Zoom meeting.
No face to face?
Without face to face.
And how many people attended the meeting?
One person. At least had three hundred, she told us three hundred persons.
That makeup of the mile radius, did you say a mile?
A mile, yes, ma'am.
And that community did you breakfast? Did you have any idea of the makeup of that community?
What do you mean, the makeup?
Was it seniors, was it new homes, was it, you know? What I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm looking at is, is who you were reaching out to. Do you know, do you have any idea? If you don't, no worries.
Well, it was specifically demographic for the folks that are in the neighborhood. I do not know that level of information. But what I can tell you, the majority of the properties that are in that immediate area are industrial properties.
Okay. Within that one mile, it's entirely industrial?
No, I didn't, I didn't say entirely. It was primarily, there's a, a good bit of industrial property.
I have a question. What person is industrial, what person is residential?
I didn't go to answer that question.
And the person that showed up was?
He was not, he was, he was a business owner right down the street. Do you remember his name?
Clarence was his name?
Yeah, Clarence.
I think H and G Electors is a electrical parts supply company.
Who had a tender interest in what we were doing, called and, and doubted to find out more about the project.
Commissioners, does anyone have another question? Okay, I understand that this has been functioning for fourteen years as a recycle center, but has there been an environmental impact study on how this would affect like groundwater, adding this component?
All of this was part of the application that we submitted, we didn't include it.
We did, yeah, okay. And so I should be able to look at it or is that?
It might be part of the staff analysis.
I'm sorry, I just didn't see it.
Are you looking for the environmental studies analysis? That's not included in the staff report, that's a part of the application process. Moving forward, if you guys would like the staff report as well as the entire application package?
Yeah, that would be great.
We must have to get that too, though. Okay.
Commissioners, we actually can't provide that because it has personal information on it related to the applicant. So we would have to send it over to the city attorney to have it redacted. That really is just for staff. And what we can do is we can include, and then that, we include that analysis part to our staff report. So we can include some additional analysis. But for legal purposes, we can't include the actual application in the supplemental documents.
To this Commissioner Allen Council?
We would have to send it to the city attorney's office to have information redacted.
For this, for this Commissioner Allen Council?
Yes.
So in the, in the future, what, which the question she asked, and she was, Rihanna asked, and he, and she was, the answer is we include, that was included in the application. She's to take that information for what, to be what it's, for whatever it's worth. I mean, I mean, how do you handle that?
Let me, if I could just explain. So part of, as was indicated, any rezoning, any variance, any special use permit that's submitted to the city of South Fulton has to go through an environmental impact document. So there are questions that the applicant, when they're proposing any three of those, and in this case, this is a special use permit, they have to address the issues related to the potential impact on the environment. And so there are a series of questions that they ask, and then they might have to attach an additional sign. But that's kind of, as the chairwoman had mentioned, this state isn't necessarily heavily regulated really to do right now. Okay. It's just kind of a two, three-page response that they have to provide.
I think we might have some additional commentary on that point.
Thank you.
Oh, wait for a moment. Can there be additional commentary, right?
Well, it's, it's addressing your question.
Oh, okay, okay. No, I knew he was part of the applicant, but I just wanted to make sure that people needed to hear more.
My name is Robert Heller and I work for Harbin Newberry and Trible. We're a consulting engineering firm that specializes in solid waste permitting. And I can speak to some of the environmental concerns and the process that will go through today. It's a special use permit, the, but from there, we're gonna actually go to Georgia EPD to get the solid waste permits. Solid waste permits have their own environmental review process, including a site acceptance building report, which will look at groundwater, location streams, floodplains, airports, you know, the long, the environmental concerns that have to be addressed and submitted to EPD. EPD will review that and sign off on it prior to any further steps in the project. So there will be a very detailed EPD, I can review the project. Furthermore, from there, the project will also have a design and operation plan submitted. That also gets submitted to EPD and that's part of the permitting process, execution part process. And the site will also, as staff noted, have to contain a land disturbance permit. And the land disturbance permit will have some environmental safeguards in place for land development, erosion, sanitation control, and safeguards to the surrounding area as well. So this is just the first step of several processes that, between the state and the city, that will ensure that lots of state local projects.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The special use permit that you're requesting now, do you have to have that in order to do the next steps? Like, can you do the next steps and then come back and do a special use permit?
At the Georgia EP level, EPD regulates all solid waste management in the state of Georgia. The sign off from the local government is the first step that required in that process. So this is definitely the first step. Once obtained, we will initiate solid waste permitting through the state.
So you can't move forward without this step first?
Correct.
There's no coming back or working with or working with it at all?
There is a come, you know, coming back in the land disturbance permit portion for the construction and the development of the site. But for the zoning, the zoning is always the first step. That has to be consistent and then before EPD permitting starts on that side.
Are there other municipalities where Waste Pro has initiated this, this, this method, this methodology?
This would be the first for Waste Pro in Atlanta. We have one in, in Cordeal, Georgia. But that's several different waste haulers, so it's not Waste Pro. So they, they see the value in this for them because they're taking it all the ways to a landfill and they're really trying to move into more of an environmental steward. And they're turning their trucks into C and G trucks. They're trying to get more recycling programs going. And this is just the next step for them in, in that evolution for recycling, alternative energy, green energy, clean gas.
Okay. Any more questions? Commissioner Vaughn?
I'm sure you can.
Ms. Vaughn?
So what, did you want the bag of voices?
She doesn't want?
No, she doesn't want to.
It's okay, we can, we can share.
These are her jewels. These are her jewels.
All right, since no more discussion, then I will entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer this case. Oh, we already closed.
I move to approve with staff conditions for U two, two dash zero, one special permit for the transportation.
Second.
Commissioner Haddie made the motion and Commissioner Shannon Jones seconded it. Is it properly moved and seconded? Mr. President, please call the vote.
Commissioner Haddie?
Aye.
Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Don?
Aye.
Commissioner Walter?
Aye.
Commissioner Ring?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellerly?
Aye.
Ayes.
I just have it, we'll now move on to item two, public hearing to consider, U twenty-two dash zero one three. The applicant, Shanna Weldon, is requesting a special use permit for the operation of the daycare facility. If that helps, the song to Jay John for presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, as Madam Chair stated, the case number is U twenty-two dash zero one three. The address is forty ninety-five Stonewall Taylor Road. The applicant, Ms. Shanna Weldon, is requesting a special use permit for the operation of the daycare facility to an existing place of worship within the AG one agriculture district on approximately six point eight three acres of land. The subject property is located again at forty ninety-five Stonewall Taylor Road as it withstands the Cliftondale Ovalay District and District Four. Just to give a little background information on this petition, the Cliftondale United Methodist Church is the location where the applicant is requesting the daycare. The church has previously operated a daycare, however licensed or permitted, cannot be found to support the claim. The daycare facility will operate out of two classrooms, which each classroom is approximately four hundred and sixty square feet and located north of the sanctuary. The applicant is proposing two to three teachers that will provide instruction to twenty students. As proposed, hours of operation is part time, which is nine AM to one PM. Here is the comprehensive plan or future language map. The character area for its urban neighborhood and the star represents the location. Here's the current zoning for it, which is AG one agriculture, and again, the star represents the location. This is the aerial view of the physical worship. Here's another one. Here's the site plan.
This exists in the grid?
Yes, sir. And just to provide a little knowledge on this petition, the daycare will be an accessory use to the church. Section three oh two point eight entitled Church of Zoning, of the zoning ordinance, the use of the accessory to the church shall meet the said requirements unless modified under conditions with an approved S U P special use permit. Just to give down to a few, the staff informed the applicant of the required development standard, which is in section three oh two point twelve entitled daycare facility. And then one of the criteria is the applicant must install a minimum of a six foot fence around the play area. Again, staff informed the applicant this required a required development standards on numerous occasions. And this requirement is to assure the safety of the students as well as limited, limited play area for the students as well. And the applicant has refused to install a six foot fence for this particular special use petition.
Six foot opaque?
Yes, six foot opaque, I'm sorry, six foot opaque fence.
Hey, when you say opaque, you mean so you can't see through it?
Yes, sir. Whatever that material for opaque is, I'm not really sure what that material for opaque is. Yeah, you just can't see through it for the.
What's the purpose of it being opaque as it pertains to the children?
Nobody can see in or out.
For the state of the students.
Because they get, you know, put their feet through it and climb up.
Or students or somebody passing by can't climb over to snatch a kid's and keep it going.
Street people passing by.
Why would they propose to?
I believe Michelle is here, yes, Michelle is here, so she can speak more to it. And staff recommendation is denied. Though the church is suitable for the use of daycare, the applicant is not willing to abide by the development standards of installing that six foot opaque fence, which is in section three oh two twelve point twelve of the zoning ordinance. As stated previously, the requirement is to ensure the safety of the students as well as limits the play area for students. And Ms. Weldon is here to answer any questions that you guys have.
So with that, we'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Come on, can we make a motion to open the public hearing for case U twenty-two point three? U twenty-two zero thirteen?
Second.
Okay, that motion was made by Commissioner Walters and seconded by Commissioner Perry. Properly moved and seconded, Mr. Parks, can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Haddie?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Don?
Aye.
Commissioner Walter?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellerly?
Aye.
Ayes, one.
Can we have the applicant? Come on up.
I'm Ms. Shanna Weldon and I'm the one who is requesting a special use permit for forty zero nine five Stonewall Taylor Road. I am a South Fulton resident, a longtime South Fulton resident, currently residing in District Two. I am a product of the Southern system and I have twenty years of public education experience. I've been a teacher, I've been an instructional coach. My last position in public school, I was an early learning coordinator for a land public school. So I've had, the past five years, I made decisions around curriculum instruction assessment for pre-K students. So over thousand students have been active. In addition to my experience in education, I'm also a mother. So I have a three year old and a five year old. And when it was time for my oldest child, who's now five, to attend preschool, I did a lot of research in our community about what was available. And we are a family that did not need full time childcare, but I did want my child to go to preschool. We know that research shows that now that the critical window for learning is from zero to five, ninety percent of the brain is developed during that time, our children should be exposed to high quality options. And so through my research, I really did find something that was really a good fit for, for my, for my family, what I was looking for. I needed a part time option and all that offered in our community are full time daycare options. And so, you know, people would say, well, you can bring your child part time, but you have to pay full time tuition. And so when it became time for my child to go, she actually did not vote preschool, just because of the pandemic. But what I did, I left my position in public school and I launched Global Prep Preschool and Online Preschool. So in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, I taught a group of children online, we had a great year. And so what I'm trying to do now is expand. And I found a location that is suitable, it will work at forty zero nine five Stonewall Taylor Road to have utilize two classrooms to serve students ages three to five. Part time from nine, no longer than four hours a day. And so I want to refer you to the section that was on there, section three zero two point O H B in the South Fulton zoning ordinance. And it says, it indicates accessory use is customary to a church, so I'm just going to read exactly what it says. Any associated daycare centers, private schools, recreational fields, mentors, and caretaker residents, and other uses that are subject to requirements in this article shall meet said requirements unless modified under conditions approved with a special use approval for the church. So what I'm asking for is your support to approve the special use permit with a modified condition to not have a fence around the outdoor play area. And it's not, I'm refusing to put a fence in that area. The green space, can you go back to the aerial view? So the green space, if you look behind the awning, like where the little red is, like the green space back there, and it's probably about, maybe it's a quarter of an acre, but right behind the awning is like where would be the play area. So it's in between the sanctuary and the fellowship hall. There would never be more than twenty students in that area. There will always be a minimum of two adults in there. And the way that the church is situated, it's not feasible to put a fence from, from the church's perspective in the middle of like there are two buildings right there. The, it's, you can see how far away it is from the street, like it's not going to be an issue. And I will also say that the State Department of Early Care and Learning, right from the start, which licenses childcare centers for the state, they do not require a playground. They do not require a fence for part time preschools. They fall under an exemption category. And so that the state doesn't require it. If you look at our elementary schools within our community, they have pre-K classes. They do not have fences around their playgrounds at our local schools. And so I'm just asking for your support.
I have a question.
Oh, we're still in the public hearing? And you are finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments for? Any comments against?
You have four? Yes. One, four, two, go ahead.
Four.
You're four, two.
Yeah, she go first.
You got a split time, you got two minutes, so five to five.
That's fine, okay.
Good evening, my name is Jackie Barrett Washington, I'm in five six nine zero Vanderbilt Road, Atlanta, Georgia. And I live in District Two, but I'm, and so I'm here to support the zoning application that is before U two, U twenty-two point zero one three, forty, forty nine five Stonewall Taylor Road. I have been kind of as a, from the church, Stonewall Taylor Elementary Church, to support Dr. Weldon in her petition before the proposal this evening. At the church, we are very comfortable that we can provide facilities that we need for safe, efficient operation of what she is requesting, the preschool operation that she is requesting. We have large outdoor spaces, we have operated a daycare center there before, would not intend to have a fence. This is not a proper naked venture for the church. Rather, we are, we see this as an outreach opportunity that will further our mission and engagement. It provides us a linkage with Stonewall Town Elementary, complete middle school, any net parents of children in those two schools may have younger children who are in need of some part time daycare. So we want to provide that space. It also gives us an opportunity to perhaps engage other people with what our church is doing, with Stonewall Town Elementary is doing, and we like that as part of our community output. I also have experience with the city of East Pointe and having put together and had to submit to both the state and to the city of East Pointe for permitting. A charter school, in that process, we were not with the state of Georgia or with the city of East Pointe realizing that comparing apples to oranges here, with their weapons. But the city of East Pointe did not require that we have a fence around our play area. And so it is not something that, that I'm seeing across the board that cities are requiring. We, that facility has been in operation now for twelve years, never has it been required for it to be a fence on that location. So we think that we can provide, in addition to all the things that the church has done internally, to provide a safe environment inside the facility, we will work with Dr. Weldon to make sure that her staff is adequate training as it relates to safe sanctuary practices and health and safety practices that could be necessary for the operation of the school. We are, we are very willing and able to work with her and putting this school together. And so we just ask your support, your help in allowing her to have this one exemption. We think there's adequate space for the children to be outside, especially if they're only there from nine to one. So it's not like they're going to be there, you know, on days that they can't go outside. There's adequate space inside the facility. There is also, that second building is a fellowship hall. So if it would necessarily be a choice to do something other than outdoor activity, there is a fellowship hall there. We don't anticipate using it, but it is there, we need to expand into that some play space.
Thank you. We have one more comment for us?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nikki Rexer Carter, I live in District Two at twenty-eight eighty-nine Brookport Lane in Atlanta, Georgia. I am here as a career educator and a lifetime resident of South Fulton. I also have experience with running an early learning center summer camp for about seven years at a church, St. Mark A and E Church on Calhoun Road. Now, that space does now have a fence and playground, but it was not required and still isn't required from right from the start licensing. And we are here asking more support for Dr. Weldon, Dr. Weldon and Global Prep Preschool. I do live in the community and have visited Cliftondale Church many times. And as we all do, seek the best for the young children in our lives. This program is a half day program, so upon looking into right from the start and their updated rules and regulations and seeing that it does not require fencing, we ask that you grant the special use permit because also in our community of South Fulton, we do not have programs that end half day. So being that the program will end at one o'clock, that is beating traffic from local schools and preventing any concerns with children being close to a high traffic area. Because the program ends at one o'clock, it meets the needs of another demographic of parent that is not served currently in our community. Thank you so much for your time and consideration today and hope that you will agree and approve and support this special use permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments against?
Any?
No.
Will that be closed, public comment?
All right, that was Commissioner Perry and then seconded by Commissioner Hattie. And that is, can you call the vote?
Commissioner Haddie?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Don?
Aye.
Commissioner Walter?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Wellerly?
Aye.
Ayes, one.
I just have it? Okay, now this time, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the other? Oh, Commissioner Haddie?
Oh, yes. Question for staff, actually. What is the, in consideration, in consideration for the location of the playground? It's off the street and it's in between, I did have a question for you as well. What is in front of the playground? Is it an awning? You have a building here, building there?
Yeah, just the awning, the walkway.
The walkway. That's what that is going down to?
Yes.
All right.
Connects the sanctuary to the fellowship hall.
So this question is for staff, in consideration to the location of the playground, what is your, what is staff's response?
Currently, there is a development standard. We have staff responsible by making sure the applicant is abiding by the current development standard for that particular use. And because this is a current development standard that we have to abide by that, so no matter where the play area is, if it was in the front, the side, the rear, it has to be enclosed with the opaque fence. And that's why we recommend that recognition for the law, because it does not abide by the current zoning ordinance that we have to abide by.
So what is the, what are the options?
Commissioner, let me just add, the reason why, and we have had this conversation with staff and applicant, had it not been for the requirement to have this fence, we would offer a recommendation of approval. But when you look at the requirements for daycares in particular, these measures are put in place for the public safety health in Wilford. And in this case, the, the individuals that will be assembled in the area are children. And so as a result of this, when cities go through and consider these types of uses, we make sure that we provide the types of security measures that are in place that not only protect the kids from the outside forces, but protect the outside forces, those people who are not affiliated with the church, having direct interaction with the children. So this is a development standard that was put in, in consideration of the use. And so that's why, you know, kind of continuing to have a discussion with the church, you know, saying this use would be appropriate, but you have to understand why this particular requirement is needed and is necessary.
I have something. Is it pertaining to Commissioner Haddie's question?
He said he had a question.
Yeah, okay.
He sounds like it is.
Yeah.
What, yes. What I want to reiterate is that, like, the state who licenses childcare centers for the entire state, it is not a requirement for a playground, it is not a requirement for a fence for a part time program. And again, in South Fulton ordinance, it says that all projects must meet said requirements unless modified under conditions of. unless modified under conditions approved with a special use approval from the church. So that's what I was asking for, like, can we get a modification, a modified condition?
Uh, Commissioner Jones?
So, just a couple of questions. Who is mandating this?
Yeah, I see the question.
If the state is not.
The city is South Fulton.
Let me, let me address that question. So there are, you will hear as commissioners, you have heard, you will hear, you have heard some items tonight. Don't conflate the different types of entities involved as it relates to the review of a project. This request isn't a request that is permitted by R.A. It is required through a special use permit. The city, because it requires this particular use of special use permit, establishes our own regulations regardless as to what other higher-level organization at a state level would do. Because we are looking at it from a local perspective. What is our role as the city, as the department, Community Development Department, that administers the, the special use permit? As commissioners, as city council members, what are our collective roles in making sure, as the preamble, if you will, the intent of our zoning ordinance says, for the protection of the public safety, health, and welfare? So this is a local regulation that has been examined based upon the specific use, and these types of development standards help to mitigate any potential impact.
When was this regulation put in place?
I'm not quite sure, I would have to go back to the ordinance and see, but it's probably been established by the time, this is probably something that we took over from Fulton County when we used that um document as a part of launching our own zoning ordinance.
Uh, well, I, second question. Sheriff Barrett, as the former sheriff of Fulton County, um, has the church looked at what type of danger, I mean, we've talked today about the danger that 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 children would be in, can you speak to that?
Ev- evidently, um, not only have I, I'm in District, but there are several boards, retired office officers, federal, state, government, insurance. Um, who are also on the board of trustees of the church. We are all very comfortable that we, we, if we did not think that we could provide a safe environment for these children, we would never, ever put them in, or put Dr. Weldon in this position. The church understands our liability, we will be on the insurance policy with her. Uh, we understand exactly what we're putting ourselves up against. We have done this before. The difficulty, I think, that I have, so Dr. Weldon has been working on this since, how long? Since the summer, and we got right up to this point, and this was the last thing. I think if we had known that staff was going to be in this position, so when you ask, how long has this requirement been in place? We're just hearing about it, at at the ninth hour. We're just hearing about it. She has been asking for this, we've been working on this since March, April. Previous administrations, previous staff have been involved, and and not once did they say to us from the beginning, this is what you're absolutely positive that you have. So we have gone down the road, we have checked all the boxes, we have done all the, all petitions, all the things that were required of the petition, and then we get to this point and we told, you gotta fence. Um, I guess it would have been different had we known this at the beginning. Um, there might have been other decisions on the part of the church, but we have not stepped away from this. Because of this requirement, we are simply supporting her and asking for an exemption of special.
And a nursery has been operating here for how long?
We, we operated a nursery, kind of taken it there for, for a year, it came with prior to the pandemic. So it's there, let's just say, three years ago, and they operated there for a year. Um, so, and and we did not have any problems, any issues with safety or any concern around that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner Barrett?
Okay, um, good to hear from you.
Thank you.
Um, we, I, I hope we don't confuse what we're, what we're dealing with here. I applaud you for your efforts and wanting to open the school, and I hope that you do. However, retired educators, right from the start, um, consultants, the list goes on as it relates to me. I understand why we would need that device there. It's not the, it's not the fact that you've been safe before. This is two thousand and twenty-two, Sheriff Barrett. And I am happy to know that they are making some progress to separate children from the public. Not that, not that it's gonna, it may not do any good, but I'm just glad it's that. You're on a main road, or you're, you're, you're petitioning to be on a main road. And you cannot, based on that open parking lot, say, and you know you can't, what may or may not happen. We got surprises every day. But if this is the ordinance, if this is the requirement, don't let a fence uh steal your dream. I can see where it is necessary, just like I can see why you can't just walk into the school anymore. You can't walk into a daycare anymore. You can't walk into a lot of places anymore. And they could have been existing for a long time, but for the, we gotta look at, we gotta look at things differently now. And it's not the same, and I want you to keep moving, but don't let the fence get in your way. And if it's on the books, and it is, it doesn't matter because by the time the star told you not to do. It doesn't matter if this person told you not to do it. It is what it is, it that is mandated, we gotta do it. Or you not, don't have to do it, but I understand why.
And I, I understand, and I agree, you, we never know what, what can happen. I just wanted to bring to the fact that, you know, we have schools already in our city, same thing, the, 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 the school, you go down the street, Stonewall Elementary School, they have pre-K classrooms, they go out on playground of all ages, they don't have that.
They have security, that we're not talking about, we're talking about two different entities. Let's just deal with what, what, what they, what the ordinance says, or shall I say one, is that what it is?
No, it's, it's a development standard as it relates to special use permit, but.
So I'm looking at right from the start regulations on page forty-five, under fifty-nine, one dash, one dash, point two-six. It indicates under Area Four, Center Approved Barriers, Playground Shall Be Protected From Traffic or Other Hazards By A Four-Foot or Higher Secure Fence or Other Barrier Approved By This Department. Fencing Materials Should Not Present A Hazard To Children and Shall Be Maintained So As To Prevent Children From Leaving The Playground Area By Any Means Other Than Through An Approved Access Route. Fence Gates Shall Be Kept Closed Except When Persons Are Entering or Exiting The Area. So is there an updated version that you guys may have, or you can show me where it doesn't say that?
What are you reading from, from right from the start? Okay, so that's for licensed programs, right? So they have an exemption, you can apply for exemption from licensing status if they have exemption categories. And so since this is a part-time preschool, it qualifies for exemption status. Like, I can get that information to you and write it from somebody from right from the start, but yeah, that is an exemption from licensing.
Gotcha, so your program won't be a licensed facility?
No, it's not.
Ah.
Yeah, just like preschool classes and public schools are not licensed, like preschool.
But you are obtaining permission through the city of South Fulton, am I correct?
Yes, so that's why I, I was thinking to the fact that, could we get, since it said that it had immediate requirements unless modified under conditions approved, so that's why I was asking.
Oh, you were asking, could we just?
Yeah, and then that was also in the initial application for the letter of intent. All this information was included with the initial application.
Sure, so if I could ask, what, what actually is the problem with our getting the fence? What, what would be your against for it? What is your reason for not wanting the fence?
It's just not cost-effective.
It's not cost-effective.
For, for me, as a small business owner who's just starting out, and then, I mean, it's an eyesore for the church for the way that the land, if you see the way that the land is in the back, they have, um, you know, they just, um, expanded the parking lot on one side, and so there's the other, you know.
In the middle of it? Yeah.
Yeah, right there behind there.
It's an alley, it actually doesn't stare.
That's a staircase.
Commissioner Harriet, it's one of the knowledge you're pointing.
There's, there's a staircase there, and I don't know that there's a, um, I, I don't know that there's a, it hasn't seen any part of the first call, or they just pushed that one part of the first, put up a fence. It is not, it is not something that's been brought to our board of trustees as a, this is what we've got to have in order for this project to move forward. That might be our next step. We were going on the fact that, under the bright from the start guidelines, there could be an exception. Um, under the guidelines that we were reading from, even from the city of South, there could be an exception. And so we have not taken that step because we understood there could be exceptions made. And so the first step was to see, could there be exceptions made? The other option, quite frankly, could be to amend it to the children stay inside and play inside of a fellowship hall. There are options, we are not, you know, we are not in a position of saying we're not gonna do it. That's not, we, we've never said that. So we, we, we want to work with you, we want you to work with us, because we think this is something that will be great for our community. Um, and if we can't see the exceptions, we certainly understand all of the safety and issues and concerns. But our first step is to see if we can get the exception.
And understand we cannot make any changes, as commissioners.
Um, I, I just like to add, in terms of that exemption, um, were there other, were there some considerations in the time that you were advised by staff of what you could do to address the, the real, the real issue of privacy and security for the children?
We don't.
Because that, that's where an exemption could be actually considered, you know, like to versus not having any, any family, or, or, or.
No, like I said, no, nobody ever said anything in the initial application request, like, all that was written in here, no one ever said. You know, I've asked repeatedly, what, what does this mean then? Like, unless modified under conditions approved with a special use approval from the church, but have not gotten a clear answer on what that means. How do you get a modification? But in my initial request of application, I asked for that.
I have two questions. Commissioner Harriet?
So, uh, I, I, I think it's universal that this seems like a, a good addition for the neighborhood. I don't think anybody, uh, is speaking against the, you know, the positive impact having this, having your business here at this church would have. And it seems like it all boils, boils down to a fence. And, uh, and I think, you, you kind of asked, answered the question I asked, because I, I, I can, uh, I think, I want to convince you to say, I, security, especially nowadays, and it's backing up against a wooded area, could be anybody in there. And, and I can see the safety precautions of why a fence could be important. And, and my question was, since it all boils down to the fence, and, and I guess it's gonna be, uh, kind of a rude question now, but has the church told you that you cannot put a fence there? I, I, I know cost-effectively, it's an added cost, and, and maybe aesthetically, it's, it's, it takes away, but is, has the church told you that, no, you cannot put a fence there? Have, have you broached that with?
No, we have not gone down that road because, like I said, when I initially sent the application, you know, we simply asked for that modified condition when I applied for it.
If, I, 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 I think, and, and, and I think you had other options, and, and, and you spoke to them. Would it be maybe appropriate at this time that maybe you would, maybe defer this for a minute and, and explore other options that, that you can do without a fence? If, if, you know, if it's a security kind of thing, and, and there's other options that you, like you said, you could keep it inside or, or, or what have you, would you like more time to maybe explore what other options are available to you? And, and not, let, let's not make a decision today and maybe defer it, give you time to address those security concerns, or whether or not?
Um, yes, if, if somebody can tell me how that process works, like, I can come back and come to get on the agenda and.
Yeah, I think, I think if, if we as, as a, as a commission defer your request, then it goes back to staff, and, and you could work with staff to address those concerns, and then you could come back, and it can be placed back on the agenda with whatever modifications you'd want to make to your complaint.
Commissioner Harriet?
Okay. You know, I said that it has to be open. How tall did it have to be again?
The, the development standard is six feet, six feet over the fence.
Does it say in the special use permit, how much square foot it has to be? Does it say what type of equipment has to be in there, or anything like that, when it comes to this?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, this, this development standard is, and this is how you know it's tied to the issue of security and safety. So it really is put in the ordinance to address the issue of making sure kids are not wandering off. If you look at that picture, we see in the adjacent parcel, there's, there's a swimming pool. I can't tell from that image if that pool has a fence around it or not. But imagine if kids are out there and they're playing, and they're not in a contained space, and someone, some kid gets, um, is, is mischievous and decides to go over and falls into a pool. So there, it, it was put in place specific to this particular use to ensure the safety and security of those that will be going in.
Okay, and if we did say yes, okay, she says it's a four-hour school. Um, let me ask you this, is this only for this location? Does it go with her as a business, or does it go with the site itself? And also, I guess I have a lot of questions, with the daycare itself, if we give you an exemption, then other daycares or not daycares or learning educational facilities are gonna ask for it too.
Now, I would say that, um, not if you're a full-time worker, you do have to be licensed, and then you would have to do that. Like, our, we, like, part-time preschool is like a standard service in most communities, right? You go to neighbor, does this money save, kind of civil, they're everywhere, and they're in church.
But this doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if it's part-time or full-time. The whole thing is, our special use permit is for the facility itself. And if the facility has to have a fence because of the safety of the kids, then it has to have it. There's no really a way around it, even though they're requesting that you go and see. There really isn't a way around it because of the fact of the safety of kids. And who would raise their hand and say they don't want kids to be safe?
Absolutely want children to be safe.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I'm saying, that's all I have.
Well, I'm just saying that there are schools in operation right now in our cities that don't have fences around playgrounds, that have backed up the woods and, and children go outside and play every day. I mean, people, in people's backyards, I mean, they're not always fenced, and children go out and play because they're supervised, but, um.
I think, I know the part, but that's the front of the house, it's not a pool. But, um, the school, is that school in front of the house? Um, when are you starting this program, when are you trying to start?
When we started this process, it was supposed to be like August, um, you know, then we were in January, and at this point, we're probably looking at August, um, twenty twenty-three.
Will this be Monday to Friday?
Yeah, apparently that's an option for two days, eight days, basically.
Commissioners, if, if I could, let me just address the issue related to the permitting of schools. And this is maybe where there's a misunderstanding in terms of what this request is and how schools are permitted, not only in the state of Georgia, but anywhere. Uh, school, public schools, private schools are permitted through the state, state has a department. Um, schools, municipalities, um, other governmental entities, federal facilities in particular, state facilities, when they are constructing, building something within our jurisdiction, they do not have to get a permit from us. That's why schools don't come to you to ask for a special use permit. Because they are, they have their, they have their own permitting process that supersedes the local municipality. When a daycare comes in, which is not a school permitted by the state, then it is subjected to the requirements of the local municipality. Hence, our code says that a daycare center has to have a special use permit to regulate the conditions. One of the conditions is that, uh, there be an open six, six-foot fence. No specifications, I don't believe, of the size, but the area that's designated for kids to assemble outside has to be contained within this area.
Oh, Commissioner Harriet?
I move that we defer U twenty-two at three zero one three.
Ms. Harriet, we got seconded.
That was moved by Commissioner Harriet, seconded by Commissioner John. Probably moving seconded. Um, Ms. Parks, could you please follow along?
Commissioner Harriet.
Aye.
Commissioner Perry.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Walter.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
No.
Commissioner.
Before, before we do, Madam Chair, just want to make sure that, uh, those are taking the minutes. We had six yeses to defer, one no to defer already. And the person who did not agree to defer is Commissioner Devon?
Hmm.
Okay. Yes. This will be a quick, um, just, uh, debrief, um, related to some other activities that's coming on. Uh, here I call community development director for, uh, city of South Fulton. As it relates to the, uh, items on the agenda, as you may know, um, at the last planning commission meeting, we discussed, um, having an additional special meeting to handle some text amendments and some ordinances. Uh, my colleague, Red, you know, is walking out, but, um, um, certainly, this has been a tradition. At the end of the calendar year, uh, city council, um, will present a number of legislative items that they want to achieve for the, uh, before the new meeting. So we have, uh, a number of items that we'll discuss, uh, special use, sorry, short-term rentals and rooming houses, uh, looking at amending the ordinance that doubles those two particular activities. Um, if you have, um, and I'm sure you have, looked at the code, you will notice that there are a number of errors and omissions. Uh, our code is sexist. Uh, it refers to the city manager as he, um, or his. Uh, it refers to the community development and regulatory affairs director as a him. Uh, and so we're wanting to do gender, gender neutral language. Uh, we also want to make sure that it is, um, it addresses appropriate trends, and it makes, um, it, uh, presents itself to be a professional document. And so with that, we're gonna be doing some just clarifications and some corrections. These are gonna be minor things. We will be getting that staff report in the coming days, uh, and we redlined it. And I will probably have to make sure that, if you have to say, well, you can see the red line and the original language of what it's been changed to. So we're gonna handle those items primarily. Um, and then, of course, it could not be a planning commission meeting without someone trying to sneak in a new, um, development project. So the intent of this special meeting was supposed to only handle text amendments and ordinance, uh, to the ordinance, uh, but we might have a project or two that sneaks in. And these are some of the items that have been deferred from some of our planning commission cases that we have, uh, now renewed a recommendation having worked with applicants.
You said will?
This is the zone.
It's no more than two.
Does that mean Z two, twenty-two, zero, zero, seven, resulting in Wallace Road?
Uh, Wallace Road is one project, it's three, Commissioner Henry, because Commissioner Jones is just reminding me. Uh, and some of these, um, some of these were added only because by the time we had gotten this agenda out, the, some of the additional documentation that the applicants were submitting was out there, and we didn't want to rush and try to get the, the information. So Wallace Road will be one, um, there is a project on Campbell Road, and this project is bifurcated between the city of East Point and the city of South Fulton. They're doing an industrial project, the building is in both cities. And so, uh, we will have a staff report on that. And then the final project is, um, the RV park, if you would call, Teal Road, the RV park. And we had to, we had to go back and do some additional research related to the state, um, and some additional regulations, so those items. But because you have heard them, those items should go fairly quickly. And just as a friendly reminder, uh, this next special planning commission meeting is gonna be on Zoom.
This, uh...
That'd be December fourteenth?
I was just about to add, this is a quick question. I know there's a lot of people...
November fourteen.
There's a lot of people interested in, in the RV park. Can you just remind, just say how, since it's gonna be a Zoom meeting, how they can participate and give their comments?
Yes. So starting tomorrow, we will post the agenda. The agenda will have the Zoom link, um, and then, um, we will probably subsequently also have it playing on YouTube. But there will be a Zoom link for the public to participate. And those individuals that attended the first meeting, we have their names, because they signed in. We'll make sure that they get an email with the link so that they can participate. Because we know that there is a great deal of interest, not only for the Teal project, but for Wallace Road as well as for the Campbell Park.
So this will be next Monday?
Monday. At six.
Are we gonna do the text amendment first, or we're gonna do, or does it have to be in a certain order?
It, it doesn't have to be in a certain order. We probably wanna do the three cases first to get them out of the way, and then go to the text amendments. But, uh, the text amendments should be easy reads because they're redlining, and you'll quickly see the changes right there.
Then what time does this start?
Six p.m.
Six p.m. The reason I keep asking, what you told me to be here today, that was probably tell the people that was here for this meeting today as well. And then we got told earlier that this is gonna be December fourteenth, and now it's gonna be here. I don't know what's going on with this project here. It seems like it's something that's trying to get stuck in. This shit is not going in this area. Not a RV park. It's not gonna happen.
That, so if you were told December fourteenth, it was just probably a misunderstanding of the date.
Well, we don't hold misunderstandings in this issue. I'm sorry. We don't hold no misunderstandings.
So we will, we will, we will take up the matter at November fourteenth. Uh, and so the staff reports and the other items will be available starting tomorrow. But all of those, um, participants from the previous cases will be available. Um, one other thing I, I did want to mention, because we are about to engage in the holiday season, um, I wanted to quote the commissioner to see if there's any interest in getting together for a, um, try to be politically correct, um, a holiday. So if you're interested, just let me know, and then we will probably organize something.
That sounds nice.
There won't be alcohol.
Did anybody watch it?
We might have some, uh, we might invite some planning conventions from some of the neighboring areas if you all go up.
Did anybody watch it?
We might have some, uh, we might invite some planning conventions from some of the neighboring areas if you all go up. Then you all talk with some other organizations.
Are you stuck in department highlights, the parties? Madonna, I'm interjecting a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm gonna sort of move.
Okay, that was, uh, the, the motion was made by Commissioner Jones, and it was seconded by Commissioner Barry? Okay. Mary? Yeah, okay. And, uh, it's probably going to be seconded. Ms. Parks, could you please call those?
Commissioner Hatton?
Aye.
Commissioner here?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Walter?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Ayes.